Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Avon Monthly Meeting of the Board of Education at 7:04 PM. I will begin with a roll call to help everyone who's with us this evening know who's sitting up here and working through the agenda. I'll start with myself and fellow board members. I'm Deborah Schut. I am the chair. We also have Thage Singh, our vice chair.
Present, Deb.
Jeff Fleishman, our secretary.
Present, thank you.
Jackie Blaia.
Present, thanks, Deb.
Laura Young.
Present, thank you, Deb.
Lynn Katz.
Present, thank you.
Liz Summercorn.
Present, thanks.
Thank you. Sarah Thompson.
Present, thank you.
And Nicole Russo.
Present, thank you.
And now for administrators. Dr. Carnemola, our superintendent.
Good evening, thank you.
Mr. Janini, Assistant Superintendent.
Present, thank you.
Mr. Meddick, Assistant Superintendent.
Present, thank you.
Ms. Russo, our Business Manager.
Present, thank you.
And Ms. Sardenskis, our Executive Assistant to the Superintendent and Board Clerk.
Present, thank you.
Thank you so much. Would you all stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for joining us tonight. I'd like to take the time to read our mission statement. This is the work that drives all of the decisions that we make. Our mission is to inspire in each student a joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. Now, we move into our recognition, which is always an exciting piece to celebrate all the good things that are culminating from the work that we do here. So I would like to invite forward for the Bridges Program. Is it Tassan Haynes, Mr. Haynes?
Yes. Thank you. So, Mr. Haynes knows, and I'm sure he's going to start to call them up, but as you know, board members, we are looking to do two things with these types of recognitions, especially tonight. And one is to be able to bring to life some of what we do in the school district for you as the board who don't always get to see what we get to see and the public through the lens of the students as much as we can. And so, we are here to recognize the work that they did, but they've also done a little bit of an extra step of work to be able to explain to you tonight as a board what this Bridges Program was about. So, I want to start by thanking, I try to do it with each of you individually out there, but I want to, in case I missed anyone, I want to thank all of our students and parents who came in tonight to be able to do this, not just to be recognized, but because our students were so excited to actually be able to come and speak to you as a board tonight about their experiences. And that, of course, makes me happy and proud. Good time to be the superintendent. So, students, I want to thank you, our high school students at Roaring. We have one of our little people from Roaring Brook that I know for sure out there, and we may or may not have one of our little Pine Grove ladies to come up also. So, thank you. And, Mr. Haynes, I'll let you usher them up.
Okay. All right. So, I'll have two students that are going to actually present for me today. So, my two victims, come on up. So, before we get started, I just want to say publicly that I truly, truly, truly do appreciate the parents that allow their children to participate in this program. I'd like to thank the board and Dr. Carnemola because there's so much work that goes into this. So, I'm going to not be the star here because the kids are, and I'm going to let them take it over, and then we'll kind of see exactly what we have for you.
So, you can introduce yourselves.
Hi, my name is Gerald Blais.
Hi, my name...
Hi, my name is Anaya Williams-Bay.
So, what was the Avon Bridges Program? It was modeled after the Big Brother and Big Sister Program. And we, high school students, went down to the elementary schools and read and did activities with the elementary students. The program was a seven-week-long program where we read and did other activities, like we talked about family values and other stuff. Each high school student was paired with a buddy or more, depending on how many Pine Grove or Roaring Brook students there were, and you would read with them for the seven weeks.
The Bridges Program objectives. So first, we like to encourage dialogue between students with similar backgrounds, experience, and cultures through shared experience, such as reading and discussing literature from authors of very diverse backgrounds. And then next, we foster a great sense of connection to the Avon School Community for students who reside in Hartford. And then lastly, provide a leadership opportunity for AHS students.
All right. So, this is just to give you an indication of the weeks that were mapped out. And, next slide. So, one of the activities that's listed on this, which I really wanted to make sure that I shared with everybody, and this might embarrass some of our kids, but I'm going to say it anyway. One of the activities that we had with the kids were to build paper airplanes. And anybody of a certain age, this is what we did while we were in school, right? We knew how to make a paper airplane. Well, a lot of our kids did not know how. So, it was a great opportunity for our elementary school students to see our high school students problem solve. So, all of the students got on the phones, they got on YouTube to learn how to make a paper airplane, and our little kids got a chance to watch them do that, work on it together, and then we had a nice little contest. So, those are just some of the things that we were able to do, again, building connection from our little kids to our older kids. Next slide. So, here's just some pictures that I've just wanted people to be able to see of the time that we had together, all right? So, I'm letting Christine just kind of go through them slowly. So, again, those are just some candid shots of our kids in action. If you could have been there just to see our last event where the kids went to Barnes and Nobles and when we went out to eat afterwards, it was just sheer joy on the faces of our kids. We even had some of our high school students, because that was our last day, emotional because they were parting ways, for the most part, with their little buddy. So, one of the things that I wanted to do was, I wanted to invite one of our elementary school students up. We have Rain.
If Jada's out there.
And Jada Edwards, if you're out there. So, Rain, what we want you to do is just to tell us, what did you enjoy most about the Bridges Program?
About having a lot of fun.
You had a lot of fun? Did you do some reading?
Yes.
Coloring?
Yes.
Laughing?
Yes.
Dancing?
Yes.
There we go. So, thank you so much, and we're so glad and we're so proud of you for showing up, and hopefully you can do it again next year. So, here's just the moment in the ceremony where our student, high school students are going to briefly answer just one of the questions that we have outlined. What was the most valuable part of the experience? Or, what did you learn about yourself as a result of participation? Or, the very last question could be, do you wish you had this type of program available to you when you were in school?
I'd like to ask all of you to come up. We want to recognize you anyway, so my high school students, our high school students that are here, can you come up? So, no pressure. Just if, I know some of you actually wanted to speak, which again made me happy and proud that you were not only willing to come out, but you wanted to be able to talk a little bit about what you did. So, the mic is yours.
I'm just going to pass the mic around, you know, like around a festival. All right. So, you go ahead and answer every one of those questions.
What I enjoyed most about the Bridges Program was connecting with some of the younger kids that we were working with.
Me personally, I wish that Bridges was a program when I was in elementary school because being from Creck, I never really had experience from high school students, and I've seen the way the kids reacted to us being there, and they really appreciated it.
Similar to Gerald, from this experience, I gained insight of what it's like in the children's lives, and I would definitely say that I wish I had this program in elementary school because, you know, having that older example that I'm not the only one going through Avon Schools and being in Hartford and feeling somewhat isolated in school. So, definitely we should continue this program to let the children know that they're not alone, and you grow from this experience that you have.
Yes, going off what Zeta and Anaya were saying, I do wish that I was in this program when I was younger because it would have given me like a sense of unity, like from like such a young age with not being the only black girl in my classes.
For me, I would say that I enjoyed the students and the laughter and being able to connect with them, also as well as, you know, just being somewhat of an inspiration for, you know, how to go about school at Avon. So, it was a really great experience, a very great connecting opportunity with each and every student.
I enjoyed spending more time with my sister because my sister was my buddy, and like I just saw how she was at school and how she would work and how she was. It was fun.
Thank you. I really enjoyed spending time with the children and bonding with them, learning their backgrounds, and just overall having a great time with them, especially with the paper airplane challenge. I feel like me and Kiari did the best, just saying. But, I just really enjoyed the program, and I feel as if I would recommend it for anyone else to do it, and I would recommend the board to do it for next year as well.
I always kind of wanted a younger brother, so this program was great, definitely. And growing up, everybody had different hair and different skin, and all the heroes were white, well, not all of them, but, and you'd want to be those heroes, right? So, it was nice to be a better example or be an example that they could relate to. So, I definitely recommend the Bridges Program, same with Amir.
I definitely enjoyed seeing the pure joy that the kids had. We came there, especially my boys, they always lit up the whole room, and it was always a great time, and it always was a really meaningful time, so I really enjoyed the company of the children.
I liked doing the program because we got a break from school. Everybody needs a break, and it was just a chance to really connect with younger kids that look like us and, you know, teach them some things and just have fun and take a break from school for an hour, and yeah.
Same thing with Harmony said, and like also like, like meeting the kids and like seeing new personalities and like just experiencing like other children out of school.
I enjoyed being with the kids, and also I have my little brother, so I like how he worked at school and how different he was from home because it's not the same at all, telling you right now. Like, yeah, I enjoy seeing the kids and like how happy they was to see us too. Yeah.
I want to ask you to stay right there to make it easier for us. We don't ask you to come out without giving you something to take away for being here. It's not a check, unfortunately, but we wanted to be able to recognize you. The board wanted to recognize you for the work that you put in to making this program what it was because without you, there is no Bridges Program. So, we are grateful for that. You are receiving community service for doing the program, which you have a certificate for that in here that Mr. Haynes put together for you. Thank you, Mr. Haynes. And also, a certificate that each of you will get from the Board of Education. Outstanding achievement is hereby awarded to each one of you in recognition of your dedication to volunteering with students from the Avon Elementary Schools through the Bridges Program. So, just a little something to keep in your file when we are looking to post-high school, college, and career and so on. This is another thing you'll be able to say, you did successfully, and I wanted to make sure you were able to have that. Thank you again for being here. I'll ask that when we call your name, and I'm going to call everyone's name even if they couldn't make it because some of our students could not make it. I'm amazed that we had as many that were able to make it with everything else we have going on. I'll say your name, come up, get your certificate, and if you don't mind, just stand right here for me. Come up and go back around so we can let your parents be able to have a quick picture of all of you, which I know, I can see they've been dying to do back there, but they can't see your faces from where they're sitting, which is why we do it. Anaya. Thank you. Josh Baldeo. Diamond Marie Collier. Happy to see you.
Thank you so much, Diamond.
Juan Dorado. Ariana Dunn. Ayana Dunn. Andrew Grant. Derek Graves. Roell Johnson. Thank you, Roell. Angela Kabaki. Thanks, Gabe. Thank you, Ariana. Zeta Reed. Thank you. Aliana White. And last but not least, Amir Williams. Thank you, Amir. Yes, he does dress that way almost every day at school, in case anyone was wondering. And without pausing, if you would wait, please, students, I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize two of the faculty members that we have with us so that they're able to come up here with the students. The board may remember that this program started last year through the idea of Rosemarie Mooning and Mary Lebowski, and actually, another Mary who retired and is not with us anymore from the high school. They had this as a brainchild, they brought it to us as an idea, they wrote a grant, they received funding for a grant, and so, we piloted it last year under those circumstances and with a much smaller group of students only from the high school and Pine Grove, and only male students. That's the way the grant was written. So, we grew this program to be the bigger version that you see after that pilot of high school students and Roaring Brook and Pine Grove and boys as well as girls, which was where we wanted to go in the long run. But, Mary and Rosemarie, if you could come up, please, we want to recognize you. Rosemarie, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yours is also not a check, I'm sorry. Mary? And in the meantime, just a general thank you also, obviously, to Mr. Haynes, to Dr. Lockhart, to the administrators at Roaring Brook, and the administrators at Pine Grove, everyone that was able to be here with us tonight. You are the people that made the wheels go around. Carla Sheback also, I know, was of assistance at Roaring Brook, so thank you very much. What'd you say? Oh, and Lou, our driver, because without Lou, our driver, no one would have went anywhere. So, if you will, we'll step over here quickly. Oh, Devin? Devin, come on up. That's the right one? Come this way, then. Fashionable. Come on up. We're really just doing this, so you're right on time. Thank you, Devin. We're just going to take a quick picture. Families, if you want to come up and stand over here, you'll be able to get a good shot of them.
So, you get closer together and step forward, everybody. All right, everybody looks to the left. Shift to the middle. Head to the right for the official. Susan, is Rain still here? Oh, Rain, I'm here! Sorry, I didn't want to get Rain in the picture. All right. That will just look straight back. Yeah, just make sure Rain's standing.
Moving on, we have to move a little bit quickly because we have Footloose production going on next door, as you know, getting ready for the big weekend, and we have some folks who have stepped out tonight to be able to be here with us for a little bit. So, if Mr. Broshu...
Rehearsal's over.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Oh! Well, I guess we could do this all night. Andrew, did you lie to me? You just wanted to get out of here?
It ended at six, so, we made it work. They worked so hard, we got out quick. Hi, everyone, I'm Andrew Broshu. I'm the choir teacher at Avon High School, and forgive me, I'm going to read this because it's a little clearer if I read it. Each school year, Connecticut high school student musicians have the opportunity to audition for and participate in regional, state, and national level music festivals sponsored by the Connecticut Music Educators Association and the National Association for Music Education. The process begins in November of each school year when students from the four regions of Connecticut prepare a solo selection, scales, as well as perform a sight-reading excerpt. Avon High School, which is located in the Northern Region, has served as host for the first large audition day that features over 1,000 students and 150 area teachers. So, every November, we open up our doors and invite all these folks in, and we're excited about it. All auditioners are scored off of a detailed rubric developed by music teachers, and if successful, are invited to participate in the Northern Region Music Festival Concert Weekend, which consists of the top musicians of our area in Connecticut. Students that achieve Northern Region status qualify to audition for Connecticut All-State Music Festival. This festival is an overnight-long weekend in Hartford where the top musicians in the state rehearse and perform together in an incredible concert in Hartford. So, at this time, Dr. Carnemola wanted to recognize the students that made Northern Region and All-State.
Thank you, Mr. Broshu, and I think it bears mentioning that these are many more students than the majority of school districts see make it this far. And the talents of our students, I know you've seen more than once, unfortunately, we couldn't, I want to be clear because usually we're used to seeing you perform when you are with us, and that couldn't be done because these are individuals, they practice together, but they did all different songs and so on. So, having them come in and do a piece for you is not really an option tonight, but nonetheless, this is a good example of something you as a board and many of us aren't able to see unless you have a child that has made it to go there or you are one of their teachers. So, I thought it was important for us to be able to recognize just how many of our students have made these honors. So, parents and students, we're going through the list in the order that it is on the agenda, and again, if you would come up, the board would like to recognize you with a certificate that says outstanding achievement is hereby awarded to each student, and then it differs based on the award that you were given. So, for example, in recognition of your acceptance into the Northern Region High School Music Festival for Band is, I believe, our first category on our list. So, with that said, when we call you to come up, please come and then take your certificate and stand here and hang on tight for us for a moment. So, we'll start with Natalie Melnick. And again, a lot of our students had numerous things happening tonight. We knew that they couldn't all be here, but we'd still like to honor them by reading their names. And I'm sorry, it's hash meat, isn't it? Not hash meat. I did get it right the first time. Thank you. We had one that was going to be a little late, I'm not sure if she's here yet. Vera, are you with us yet?
Yes, she's here.
Okay, come on up, Vera. Srinivasan. All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming. I know you had tennis. And is that? Nope. And our own, Lillian Peng. It's nice to see you on the other side of that table, really. Next, we have the Connecticut Music Educators Association, our All-State musicians. These, again, are students from our whole state, and we have three different divisions, band, choir, and orchestra. So, these are, again, in recognition of your acceptance into the Connecticut Music Educators Association of All-State, and then whether it's band or choir. Danielle Chung. There you go, sorry. This is Danielle. Yep. Oh, we... Yep, sorry. Those are very personal. And did you want, Mr.? Sorry, I didn't. I wanted to make sure I didn't leave you out.
Sure. My name is Rafiq Asmile, and I'm the orchestra teacher at the high school.
Sure, my name is Rafiq Asmile, and I'm the orchestra teacher at the high school. So I'm gonna read as well, hopefully it's gonna be clearer. So this year, AHS students Danielle Choi and Michael Chen were invited to participate in the National Association for Music Education All Eastern Ensemble Festival, which includes students from the eastern U.S. To qualify for this festival, students must participate in their All-State Festival in the school year prior. Exceptional performers with the highest scores are invited to attend. Danielle also had a successful audition for the All-National Honors Ensemble and represented Avon High School at a concert festival that took place in Washington, D.C.
Thank you, Rafiq, and this is a huge honor for these two students. Michael Chen, Daniel Choi. I'm not sure I saw either. Oh, there you are. You're hiding on me. Daniel, right? Michael, wrong, sorry. I usually get them. And Daniel, yes. Congratulations. Round of applause, thank you again. And we'll do this quickly and let you go back about your busi-
Fantastic. Thank you so much for all the parents and families that have come out to celebrate your children with us, we are so proud of them. And we understand that this is a school night, and we are perfectly unoffended if you would like to dismiss yourselves at this point in the meeting. Thank you so much for coming. Alright, now we'll move forward. If I could please have a motion to approve the Board of Education's special workshop minutes of March 21st, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Jackie. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Next, could I please have a motion to approve the Board of Education's regular monthly meeting minutes of March 21st, 2023?
So moved.
Alright, Liz, and then seconded by Thaith.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously as well. Christine, do you know if we have any comments from the public? Alright. Is it more than one? Just one? Okay. Perfect. Alright, before we start, I'll just read through how this section of the meeting works. This is the section of our meeting where Avon residents have the floor to share their thoughts and/or concerns with the board. It is not an opportunity for conversation, rather it's the board's chance to listen to feedback from the community. Please add your name to the list, which you already did, Ms. Sardinskis will then call on you in order. You must state your name and address for the record. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. In an effort to hear as many of you as we can, we must adhere to this time limit. You can certainly state that you agree or disagree with a previous comment if you'd prefer to be brief. Brevity will allow more attendees to be heard. After 15 minutes are up, the board may choose to extend public comment or not. No speaker will include charges or complaints of a personal nature against any individual Avon Board of Education member or individual employee of the Avon Board of Education, whether the speaker names the individual or not. Please refrain from clapping or cheering. So please come forward and state your name and your address.
Good evening, my name is Erin Dawson, and I live at 50 Oak Bluff. My son attends Pine Grove School. And this past Friday, we had an amazing experience at Pine Grove School. We had the opportunity for a renowned jazz percussionist named Mr. Alvin Carter Jr. He's a jazz performer and African drummer percussionist. And when I tell you how wonderful the whole experience was, I was invited to attend because I did try to connect the school with this performer, because I just, he's done several performances in the Hartford County area, and for towns and for schools. And I really wanted to share this gift that he could give with our children at Pine Grove School. And it was just really, really beautiful to see an auditorium of over 600 children just rat, just captivated by the magical sounds that rang out, you know, from these instruments. And I just wanted to get up here and thank the principal, Amy Boreo. Not here today. Oh, yes, but she was so instrumental in making this happen and getting the PTO, the Pine Grove PTO, I wanted to thank them as well for sponsoring and funding the performance. But just when I was standing there next to one of the music teachers there, and I don't know if you've seen snippets or not of the performance, but he had audience volunteers that came, he brought a bevy of instruments there, and he chose audience volunteers to play, both adults and children, so that they could actually actively participate. Not only that, he actually had the entire school participate in terms of clapping rhythmically and call-in response, singing. So not only the people on the stage had the opportunity to participate, but everyone in the auditorium had a chance to create this music together. It was just so magical. But the music teacher just kept telling me, you know, she was like, "These children, they're gonna remember this for the rest of their lives." She was like, "They're never gonna forget this." And she named one of the students sitting there, I'm not gonna name it at the meeting, but, you know, she was like, "He will never forget this, he's gonna remember this for the rest of his life." And it, you know, just, you know, just to have that, I mean, it was such a gift to experience, and I just wanted to get up here and thank everyone. And I just felt like, you know, that's, it's those type of experiences where, you know, that separate, you know, being at a good school to being a school that is at a level of excellence that just cannot be measured by standardized scores, you know? It opens the window to, you know, so much more. And he actually, the children had questions for him afterwards. And one of them was, you know, "When did you begin drumming?" And he said, "At six years old, at six years old." And he, you know, and it was from his own experience of hearing the drums and the music and the percussion that he was drawn into his career path. So, you know, who knows where this will lead, you know, for any of the students, but just to, you know, just for them to have that experience was really wonderful to witness. So I just wanted to thank everyone involved and everyone behind the scenes that made the experience happen for the students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson, we appreciate that. And that was the only one listed, correct? Alright. So next, we'll move on to items of information and proposals, our student rep reports, Charlotte Perry and Lillian Peng.
Hi. So first, I'm gonna start with Avon High School. The past month has been very busy. Over spring break, we had students and chaperones visit Germany on a Holocaust Memorial visit. They went to Berlin, Poland, and the Czech Republic. I've had many friends who experienced this, and they found it a wonderful opportunity. There also was an advanced placement studio art class that was able to showcase their work at the Avon Free Public Library. Students from all grade levels were able to go visit and see their classmates' beautiful work. And as previously mentioned, our school is putting on a production of Footloose. They've been having practices and having spirit weeks for the past couple days, and I know students are excited to see them in late April. Next, this week, we have Denim Day, where students are wearing denim to support victims of sexual assault. And then Avon Middle School, they have an upcoming band concert in combination with the AHS Band on May 11th. There's a talent show coming up, which I know students are excited about. And the singing ensemble Arioso is performing at a yard goats game later in May. Now on to Thompson Brook. Parents and children started a book club and a sports night, so that gives children an opportunity to hang out with friends, as well as parents of their friends. In addition, grade six students were able to go to the Boston Museum of Science for a Springfield trip. And the Spring Play of Peter Pan has already, oh, is about to come. So that's very exciting.
So for Roaring Brook, they just had their book fair start up again. And this week has been S-Back, and it's going to be continuing until May, so that's just a lot of standardized testing for the elementary school kids, unfortunately. For Roaring Brook, sorry, for Pine Grove, they also have S-Back testing going on. And on May 3rd, they're going to have a Walk, Bike, and Ride to School Day in order to raise awareness about our carbon emissions and how we can individually help the planet together. And then, of course, Mr. Carter was able to go to the Pine Grove School and perform, but I don't think I could have summed it up nearly as nicely as Mrs. Dawson did. That's all.
Thank you so much, ladies. And next, we will move on to our financial report from Ms. Russo.
Good evening, everyone. The month of March was a relatively quiet month financially speaking. We had very few changes in our overall outlook. And we have a budget transfer listed later on the agenda that took care of some changes we had in non-certified salaries, both for our security and safety specialists and our administrative assistants, as they did some coverage for events and some extra hours due to some vacancies we currently have at those levels. Our certified teacher substitute line remains in deficit, hence the pause in spending that we continue to enforce to cover that for those unanticipated leaves that we have going on. In other expenses, we spent most of the year talking about our rising utility costs, and we had proactively moved some funds into our electricity lines in advance of ever-sourcer's increase. That increase and also the efforts of our staff in our district, and I thank them for following the energy conservation policy, has allowed the electricity not to raise, rise up just as high as we may have thought, but natural gas did. So you'll see a budget transfer 2023052 on the consent agenda, moving some of those electricity savings, I'll say that we've moved in there to cover our natural gas and our continuing rising costs in repairs, maintenance, custodial supplies and maintenance supplies, as those light items continue to rise due to inflation. In special education, we still have around $1.3 million unencumbered in anticipation of an escrow payment later in the year. We do have another transportation transfer listed on 202352. And as well, we ended the month of March with just over $3.4 million unencumbered, or 5.36% of our budget, against last year at the same time of just over $3 million, or 4.87%.
Are there any questions for Susan? Thank you. Alright. Next, our committee reports. Curriculum and professional practices, Jackie.
Thanks, Deb. We met on April 18th, we had a really good discussion about some changes to curriculum and some course changes. The entire committee decided, felt strongly that it should all be moved up to the board for discussion and for approval, and I think that will all be handled in new business coming up. Our next meeting is May 30th at 5:30.
Thank you, Jackie. Finance, Lynn?
Yeah, we met on April 18th, Tuesday, to discuss exactly what Mrs. Russo shared with us tonight, the financial report, and really good news that's coming up about our audit as well. And our next meeting is May 9th at 6 o'clock.
Thank you. Negotiations, that would be me. We did begin our negotiations with the administrative assistants, and our next meeting will be on May 1st. Policy, Laura?
The policy committee did not meet for the month of April. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, May 2nd at 6:00 P.M.
Excellent, thank you. And our liaison report for CREC Council, Jackie?
So I did attend, and we spoke a lot about the public school funding bill that's coming up. They talked a lot about the teacher residency program that has grown exponentially over the last couple of years. They've had humongous success with it, it's really exciting. Their next month is their annual meeting, and they're hoping that people will attend, and superintendents. And I guess, you know, my role with CREC is so different every month, depending on timing, but to kind of see what these students did with the program here, that Bridges program was so moving to me, literally, I thought I was gonna burst out crying in the middle, thank God I didn't, but it was just amazing to be able to learn from students that can speak that meaningfully about something that they did in our district, and how I think we as a board have hoped and worked for a long time that we would be kind of building really meaningful relationships, and this program just really struck a chord with me. So I'm gonna bring it back to CREC, 'cause I don't know if it's been already replicated among the other CREC schools, but it really should be, because I think it's a huge step in that direction. So I really just wanted to say thank you to everybody, and I will, maybe I can get more information and bring it back to CREC and kind of introduce it there. So thank you so much for that tonight, and that's all I have to say about CREC, that's it. The next meeting is next month, I don't know the exact date, but I'll be calling you, Lynn, if you want to join. It's an annual meeting, it's in-person, they love in-person on that day.
Alright, excellent, thank you. Next is the board chair update. I just want to take a moment again to say how proud I am of what we witnessed tonight, and how many activities are wrapping up the school year, it just flies so quickly, but you really do such good work as administrators to run these buildings and have these programs in place, so that the students are really engaged beyond the academics, but also with the music and the athletics and the mentoring. I think that's huge, so thank you. Myself, along with Nicole, and Lynn, and Thaith, we had the honor of attending the Abbey Weiner Holocaust Memorial Library and Portrait Evening that was held last week, and it was really touching. The students did a fabulous job of them seeing it. We had guest speakers that were survivors of the Holocaust, family members. It was very moving, and students that had just come back from the trip came that night because they wanted to be here, and that was impactful as well. So very proud of BBNO, who actually charcoal created the portrait of Abbey Weiner. And there's a big opening over to the left when you leave the library that will have that portrait within it. So I'm excited for everybody to have a chance to see that too, but it was really special, something to be a part of, so wanted to acknowledge that. And now I'll move it on to superintendent's report.
Thank you. And for the hiring report, Mr. Medick?
Good evening, everyone. As you can see from the hiring report in our packet, we are welcoming two new long-term substitutes to Avon Middle School who will be filling in for two maternity leaves. We just love babies in Avon. We welcome several non-certified staff to our district, and I'm pleased to report that all of the resignations that appear in front of you will be filled by the next board meeting in May. And I'd like to say a special thanks to Ms. Kim Powell, who served the district for 11 years. Many of you may remember Ms. Powell during her time as administrative assistant to the assistant superintendent with Dr. Rusak. She also was an administrative assistant at Pine Grove School, Thompson Brook School, and she finished up with us here at Avon High School. So she'll be going into retirement at the end of this month, and we'd like to thank Ms. Powell for her service to the district. And that concludes the hiring report for this evening.
Thank you. On the enrollment report, page 23, you can see, same thing I suppose I've been saying each month, we've seen an increase of students, our kindergarten registrations are coming in, as of earlier today, we have 93, I believe, kindergarten students registered, which is a bit higher than we normally see at this time of year when we look year over year. Again, I'll put it out that, did it go up since I last saw the report? Is that what we're saying down there? Oh, Lord have mercy. Oh, that was one of the schools, thank you. Oh, one 17 at the other, right?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine and 93, excuse me, sorry. We're projecting forward class sizes across the district today, this afternoon, so there's a lot of numbers in my mind right now. Nonetheless, 93 and 79 is more than we would typically see at this time of year. Nonetheless, 93 and 79 is more than we would typically see at this time of year. So we're still being cautious about what that's going to look like in terms of kindergarten sections. The fact that, as you already know, space is very limited at Pine Grove School. So we, as you just heard me say, again, met just this afternoon talking through class sizes and sections and so forth and possibly some additions we may need to make for next year, moves that may need to happen. We'll keep an eye on it and I'll let you know. If you know anyone with a kindergarten age student, please encourage them to come and register as soon as possible and not wait until August because that's how we best are able to serve the students and the faculty members by making sure we have proper class, class sizes. Overall, we're up 13 students from last year. At the same time, we've gained 10 students over the past month across the district. And obviously, that is not talking about kindergarten registrations. From the strategic plan update, what you saw tonight from our students related to our Bridges program is a big portion of our strategic plan. So I won't speak to that again. That's why we asked the students to speak to you about it. And I, I think they did a wonderful job at doing it. And thank you, Mr. Haynes, for working with them to help prepare to be here tonight also. As you know, we are looking to foster connections between students, all students in the district and ensuring that students feel they have a connected adult, they have other peers as friends. Obviously, this was a specific program geared to doing that for a population of our students that has often, as you heard them tell you themselves, felt a bit disconnected at times because when one comes into a school district from another town, that's unfortunately a natural consequence of that. So this was one of the ways, you know, we're working at many ways to do that, but this was one of the ways we're working at doing it. And I think it has served us well and certainly will look to. Already, we're looking at how to refine it and do it better for next year as we normally do. So I'll have let the students update you on that part of our strategic plan. Also related to, I was also at the event that Ms. Chu and some of you as board members were at here at the high school. And again, please do check it out on your way out. If you did not see it on your way in, I don't think we did because there were so many people already here, but it is to the left. Oh, we don't have it up yet?
Not yet, but it will be.
The plaque is there, though. The plaque is up to the left and you'll be able to see where the portrait is going. BBNO did a fantastic job on that portrait and the night was really special and really well done by Mr. Abrams. We, and I spoke to Mr. Abrams about that. We won't be bringing them here. We recognized them there that night. So I just want to put that out there so that someone later isn't wondering, you know, we recognize so-and-so and not so-and-so. We were at the event and were able to recognize them at the event. And Senator Seminero was able to attend with us also. Unfortunately, Tammy Exum and Alenny Cavrosdegraw were kept at the Capitol. They had all three planned to come together, but they were working on some financial items, Tammy and Alenny. So Lisa came on her own and we're so fortunate that she was able to come. She presented a beautiful citation to Mr. Abrams on behalf of the library. So it was, and that will be hung eventually too. It was a very nice night. Similarly, I don't know that many people know, April is Holocaust Remembrance Month nationally. And we, with the rise in antisemitism that we've seen nationwide, we have been, as a district and in each of the schools, talking about how to work through those issues with students to be proactive in educating students about the Jewish faith, the Jewish people, and in unfortunately, having to sometimes talk about ways that even without realizing it, some things that people may say are antisemitic in nature promote antisemitic behavior. So we have stopped and kind of hit the pause button and said, what else can we do? And as you know, I'm not a big believer, I think everyone knows this, in, you know, it's the month that we celebrate. I think we should teach everyone about all cultures all year long and ensure that we are teaching all of our students to respect and appreciate each other and their beliefs and their religions and their backgrounds every day of the year. But that said, having never really laun, I refer to it almost as launching a campaign. And I think maybe you've seen some of, there's been some on television also, the Blue Square, I noticed, some of those commercials. So we thought, let's just use it as a starting, a jumping off point that April is Holocaust Remembrance Month, like we have done with some of the other months, to start something new. And I'll be most likely talking to you about what that looks like next month. Mr. Abrams, Mr. Haynes, myself, Mr. Janini, Mr. Medick, Ms. Russo, Dr. Lockhart, Ms. Wallace, Mr. Duffy, we've all been together talking about how to move forward a program that, again, is student-centered. And we are looking to match up some of our high school students with our 5th through 8th graders because from a developmental, the appropriate standpoint, that's kind of our target audience right now for talking to about some of these issues. And fingers crossed that that goes very well. We are in the planning stages and that's been difficult because April break, the trip to Europe. And so we're shooting for the last week of April. And I want to thank everyone for helping us do that. We have, I'll talk about the calendar when we get there tonight. And I just again want to echo that our students, I know, had a wonderful experience in Europe. And I want to thank, it is not easy to find chaperones for trips in general. As you know, you're taking on a lot of responsibility as an adult when you take children that are not your own anywhere. And when you are taking them to another country on behalf of the school district, that is a completely different level of dedication, commitment, and responsibility. So I want, I just want to thank and recognize Stu Abrams, Harriet Goldlock, Mr. Jim Connolly, and Mr. Tim Feschler for escorting our students in Europe. And also, a couple of them brought along their spouses as assistants. And we also had Dr. Eileen O'Neill with us, who came out of, who came out of retirement first to help us out with some special education coverage and then to travel on this trip. I can't tell you how many students I have heard from directly to tell me that it was, and this is what they say to me most often, over the last week, a life-changing experience for them. And so I'm glad we were able to provide them the opportunity. And I thank all the chaperones for stepping up and making it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on the consent calendar, I always just want to acknowledge how generous our PTOs are to our schools. We are incredibly grateful for what they've offered. And if you see, item D is the book donations to create the Abbey Weiner Holocaust Book Collection. There's over 300 books. So we're really proud that this is most likely the largest collection in a school in the state, possibly nationally. So this is something that we should all acknowledge. So I will take a motion to approve the consent calendar as it is.
So moved.
So moved by Jeff, second. Second by Nicole. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Let me see. No old business, so now new business. We'll invite Maggie Dryer to come forward. She's our Director of Nutrition Services. These are two votes that, for newer board members, we take annually. So I'll just, if you don't mind, Maggie, just you're, you're so good at summarizing it and what it's about. And then we can take action on these for you.
Sorry about that. Good evening. So we vote on this, or you vote on this every year. We didn't do it last year due to the circumstances through the pandemic. It wasn't done last year. There's two votes. One is to comply, to participate in healthy food certification. And what that means is that's any food sold to students or even given to students outside of the school lunch, à la carte sales, fundraisers, anything like that, that we comply with Connecticut's nutritional standards. Connecticut's standards are slightly stricter than the national standards. By complying to be a healthy food certified district, we ensure that we're serving the most nutritious things to our students, but we also, then we receive 10 cents per lunch served. But with, along with that, there are exceptions to it. So the second vote is for three exceptions. And that is if there's an event such as the play or a basketball game, something like that, you could sell any kind of beverages or a food item that you would like, as long as it's sold at the location of the event and at an event, not a practice, something like that. And then it's not sold out of a vending machine. So those are the three exceptions. So I recommend that we, or that you agree to comply to this. But there's two votes that, you know, read the language on.
Yes, thank you very much. Does anyone have a question for Maggie? All right. So these are very verbose and they are requested to be read into the record as they're written. So I will read them and then I'll ask for a second. So the first is pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-215F, I'll make a motion to approve that the Avon Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th of 2024. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Well, let's give it to Laura. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. For the second one, I will make a motion to approve that the Avon Board of Education will allow the sale of students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards and beverages not listed in Section 10-221Q of the Connecticut General Statute, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of an event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the location from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food and beverage sales. Do I have a second? Thank you, Lynn. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Maggie. We appreciate it. All right. Next, we move on to the audit report with Ms. Russo.
Thank you. I think all of you got the audit, very lengthy audit report in a packet from Christine. If you have a chance to read it, what you'll see is that's our federal and state single audits. What you won't see, and I'm happy, very happy to say, is any management comments, any, I guess, negative feedback, anything to recommend for the town or the Board of Ed to change in their financials for the year, fiscal year '21, '22. And I want to thank the town, in particular, Mr. Tom D'Stazio, for his work and collaboration with my staff as well on the effort last year.
Any questions for Susan? Congratulations. Well done. I think that deserves a round of applause. All right. Next, yeah. Look at the joy on your face, though. Okay, next is regarding a course change proposal for Spanish 5 and Spanish 5H. This was discussed at our Curriculum and Professional Practices Committee meeting. Mr. Janini, I think you're going to speak to this.
I am, yes. So thank you, everyone. Glad to have the opportunity this evening to share some curriculum updates with you. As you know, our goal is to have 100% of our curriculum posted online. And our conversations this evening will bring us one step closer to that. So tonight, there are actually two proposals for you to consider. The first is a course action. It's actually a revision to a unit of study in our Spanish 5 and 5 Honors Experience. And the second that I'll be speaking to in just a moment is approval of curriculum revisions to our 712 curriculum. And this will include some of our electives at the high school as well. So, yep, yeah. I'll keep going, in the interest of time. So the first up is a course, is the course action for our Spanish 5 and 5 Honors. And this course change being proposed tonight would condense Units 3 and 4 as the content and focus areas are similar. And then a new unit would be added with a focus on Central American and Latin American heroes. This change was presented at our last CPDC meeting in March. And our world language, language teachers spoke to the high level of interest by our students in this topic. Heroes are highlighted at various times throughout our curriculum. And so there's, it's believed that this will be a very popular change. Any questions about that course change, that course action?
Any questions? All right. Jackie, would you like to make the motion?
So it would be a motion to approve the course change proposal. Approve the course change, yes. I'll make a motion to approve the, to approve the.
Course change proposal?
Course change, changes to Spanish 5 and 5H.
Excellent. And do I have a second? Thank you from Sarah. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously.
Motion was a lot easier than the committee did. It was earlier.
I wrote down.
It was earlier.
All right. And then, Mr. Janini?
All right. Well, thank you. So moving on to the curriculum. As we move on to our social studies curriculum, I wanted to take a moment to briefly review the three main components of our curriculum and highlight the role that our board takes in the approval process. So our curriculum has three stages. Stage one is primarily the core content and standards, but it's truly the driver of our curriculum. It's what sets the goals for our, for learning and for enduring understandings. Stage two is assessment. That's what will be assessed, when and how. And then stage three are those daily lesson plans, day by day, unit by unit, based on student needs. The Board of Education supports the curriculum in numerous ways, including the review and approval of stage one, which is what we're talking about this evening. Next slide. So why the Board of Ed approves stage one? Well, stage one is home to the standards. It drives the daily work taking place in the classroom. And stage one represents what should be covered throughout each grade level and course. And perhaps most importantly, stage one does not change unless we come to you for approval. So much like we just spoke about those changes to the Spanish course, teachers know if they want to make a change to the core content, they need to go through the process. However, we give them that autonomy and flexibility on a daily basis to modify lessons, to decide on which assessments they'd like to use. And so that's really the difference between stage one, stage two, and stage three. Any questions about that? Okay. Next slide, Christine. And so this slide just highlights that process for you. And so again, we're using that Spanish example, but when a teacher comes forward, they would go through this formal process. But also, every five years, all of our curriculum goes through a formal review process. That starts with our teachers doing that formal review, working through. Sometimes this happens quickly and sometimes this takes place, as it did with social studies, over multiple school years. It's a heavy lift when we have a main content area like social studies. Next, it moves on to our Curriculum and Professional Development Council, where a formal presentation is given to teachers in the district who volunteer for that work. They also vote, as you know, on moving that work forward. Next, it moves to our Curriculum and Professional Practices Subcommittee of the Board, who hear that formal presentation as we did on April 18th. And they also vote to move that on. And then finally, it comes to you for final approval and becomes our formal written curriculum at that point, once you vote to move it forward. Any questions about that? Everyone's old-hatted at this point. So, next slide, yep. So what are the primary, you know, real drivers of curriculum work? So there's really two big categories. The first is alignment. We want to make sure that we maintain strong K-12 alignment. We want to make sure that we keep aligned with all the state and national standards. And the second is to continue to ensure that our curriculum is rigorous and relevant and meets the needs of all of our students. Those are the main drivers when we work on curriculum. Moving on. So these next few slides are a high-level, very brief overview of what happened in the social studies review process. Before I begin that, I'd just like to start by recognizing the members of our 712 vertical team. So a thank you to Betsy Collin, Lou, Lisa Gretchen, Michael, Ally, and Jody. There were numerous hours spent over multiple school years to bring these curriculum revisions to you this evening. So thank you to everyone who was involved. So earlier, I mentioned that changes in formal presentations were shared with CPDC and CPP, but I wanted to just give you briefly some of the key takeaways from that work. First of all, Avon's social studies curriculum was last approved in 2016, so it's been a while. Our curriculum is aligned to the standards you see listed there, and recent legislative requirements have added some courses and content to our curriculum offerings. In addition to several other changes, our, next slide, Christine? No problem. In addition to several other changes, our Stage 1s show an improved balance of skill and content. And we had Lisa Cleveland and Betsy Sanborn, our 712 coordinator, speak at CPP, and they spoke of the importance of really shifting our social studies curriculum from a real content-heavy focus to be more skill-focused. That was one of the main drivers of this work. They worked to add in some more discipline-specific terminology, and there were additional opportunities for students to reflect on what they'd learned built into all the curriculum changes. And there were some new students, I'm sorry, some, there were certainly new students that have been added, to be referenced in the hiring report, but there were new units of studies that were also added into the curriculum that are listed there. And then finally, these 10 electives have been fully written and shared for your consideration this evening, and they're listed there for you to review. And that completes, pretty much takes us through the changes to the social studies curriculum. Is there any questions that I can answer?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Just explain to us in terms of process. We know the state is mandating the addition of the Asian American Pacific Islander course in two years. What is the process for when that new course arrives, knowing that we've already gone through the revision process for social studies?
So, great question. We'd follow that same process where we would work with our department coordinator at the high school, Betsy Sanborn, and we would create a proposal that we would bring forth to be, you know, approved by CPDC, by CPP, and by the board, and then we would do the curriculum writing process once that's approved.
So we don't have to wait for us to come back around to cycle through the secondary social studies for us to include that curriculum?
Correct. As soon as we have that guidance from the state, and we already have some initial guidance, and our teachers here are already beginning to work on what that curriculum could look like, we can bring that to you. Much like we did, we don't like to get too much into changing units of study on a regular basis. That particular world language example, they spoke to us quite passionately about why they needed to make those changes for the students, so we obliged, but normally, we would wait until the full process, unless something comes down from the state, in this case where it becomes a requirement.
And just one more, if I may. I know I had an issue accessing the curriculum last night. I just want to be clear that any member of the public can go onto our website and see all these curriculums? Yes?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
And after this evening, these will be posted on the blueprint, and then the plan is to come back in May. We have CPP on May 30th, I believe it is, and for the June board meeting to bring you the performing arts, which would bring us even closer to that 100% of the curriculum posted.
And at this point, all that we really see are the standards, right? We're not, because looking at the progression, we're not at that, those other levels where we'll see the individual daily objectives and so forth. It's just the overall--
You're seeing the standards, you're seeing the essential questions, the enduring understandings, the core content that's being covered.
Great. Thank you.
Go ahead, Lynn.
I should have asked this before, but I'm curious. I know we don't see Stage 2 and Stage 3, nor should we. I mean, I know they're breathing living documents. My question about Stage 3, though, is in the social studies units, are there specific research-based instructional strategies that are woven into the lessons that we promote in Avon, for example?
Sure. That's a big part of social studies, you know, curriculum, is certainly doing that research, and our teams work collaboratively in their CLTs to try to ensure that the research that they're doing is hitting those core skills, that core content that we want to focus on.
Thank you, but I think you're asking, let me help, because I think you're asking--
I'm asking a different question.
You're asking, what do we do in Avon in terms of ensuring that our teachers are utilizing research-based instructional strategies when they're teaching students? Right? So, yes, that is woven in, in part, it's woven into the curriculum, because part of it is exactly what Mr. Janini just said, which is working in tasks and activities and research and assessments that ensure that students are developing skills, inquiry-based skills, the ability to collaborate, communicate with each other in the wider world, the things that we talked about in our Portrait of the Graduate, for example, all of that criteria. Those key pieces are woven into the curriculum, but they're also a piece of what we do routinely with professional learning with teachers, both with our teachers working with each other as the experts and in bringing folks in from the outside occasionally to bring all of us up to speed, because as we all know, things seem to change rapidly in our world, although sometimes they swing back to the way they were 40 years before. It's kind of the way it works in education. We eat something new, we dry it out, and sometimes we're in a cycle of, maybe that worked, let's try it again. But we are working continually to ensure that, both in the programming and the curriculum, our teachers are able to utilize not only research-based instructional strategies, but assessment strategies. Does that answer the question?
Any other questions? Christine?
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, we always appreciate user-friendly links. Thank you for doing that. Without any further questions, I just want to acknowledge what an undertaking this truly is to do, so we appreciate all the effort you've put in, and it is very exciting how close we're getting to 100% online, so that is a huge accomplishment that we've been able to witness during at least my time on the board, and so I thank you for that. It looks like Jackie stepped out. So I will make a motion to approve the Stage 1 Social Studies Standards Revision for Grade 7 through 12. Do I have a second? Okay, I'll take Sarah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous eight. All right. Next is our Avon Board of Education 2023 to 2024 Proposed Meeting Dates. So these monthly meeting dates are the ones we're looking at for next year. There was one amendment that was made for April. Right now, if you look at the list in your packet, it says April 23rd, but we would like to shift that to April 30th, because there is a conflict for the break as well as to celebrate Passover. So if there are no objections to this list, we were hoping to take action on that, is that correct?
Yep, Ms. Sarduskas actually printed out a new--
Oh, thank you.
--a new list. April proved difficult for a meeting next month because it's an odd month this year with the way both April break and the holidays fall. So the 16th would be our normal meeting. That is the Tuesday after April break. That's a difficult time between the town and the board with the information that has to come back and forth and things being posted, because many people are not working during the April break. So rather than worry about missing the deadlines of posting materials and so forth, we wanted to stay away from the 16th. The following week is the Passover holiday, on the 23rd, I believe. It begins at sundown. It's 22nd to 23rd, 23rd, yeah, whatever the Tuesday is, I believe, it's, it is the first day. Right. Oh, that's the second day. I have it wrong.
It's all right.
Regardless, we can't do it on that. I have to look back at the calendar, as I'm saying--
Second sater.
I have to look at the actual calendar, and I only have the list of dates. I apologize. So, and the following Tuesday is the 30th, which is why we're proposing that. It's a later date than we might normally have, but the 16th and the 23rd are not possible, first for the break return, and second, due to Passover.
Go ahead, Laura.
That would only leave two weeks between the April meeting and the May meeting. Should it be, maybe, would it be a good idea to move the May meeting out despite the fact that normally it is the third Tuesday, just to allow for all the subcommittee meetings to have time to meet?
Again, I'm having, I need to open up the actual calendar. I apologize to have the dates in front of me. We did discuss that in part because one of the things at this time of year, which will be this time of year next year, that we have to think about are the financial reports and the appropriations and supplemental appropriations from the town for choice, open choice, and so forth, as we wrap up the budget year. So Susan and I discussed the fact that April 30th would actually work well from the finance angle. However, we don't really want to go too much further into May if we don't have to, on the flip side, for the same reason, because we want there to be enough time before everything has to finally be approved in June. So we, it's, you're making a good point. It's exactly the reason we would say the opposite, even though unfortunately for us, we're going to come out that quickly. We land the year in a better place by leaving the May meeting where it belongs and the June meeting.
All right. Thank you, Laura. Did anyone see any other conflicts amongst the year? Am I good? All right. Someone like to make the motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, Jeff makes the motion to approve. I'll just say it. The Avon Board of Education 2023 to 2024 Proposed Meeting Dates. Do I have a second? Second by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously with eight. All right, now we move on to our second communication from the public. Anybody? All right, thank you very much. Communication from Avon Board of Education members. Would anyone like to speak? All right. At this time, we do have an executive session planned, so I will move that we enter at 8:25, and we'll go into the next room so that Nutmeg TV can break their equipment down. Thank you, everyone. We will move in, just let me announce it as to why. Discussion of negotiation strategies of non-union contracts, and we're inviting Dr. Carnamora in. Is there anyone else? All right. Thank you.